Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the June session of the Paulding County Planning Commission. This time, if you have an audible device of any type, please turn it off or to silence so it doesn't interrupt the proceedings of the meeting. We're going to begin with a review of the minutes from the previous session of this body. I will ask if the Planning Commission has had an opportunity to review those, if you have any concerns or requested edits. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion regarding minutes from May 31, 2023 for the Paulding County Planning Commission.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Aston.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leggett. All in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one. We appear to be down two positions today on the Planning Commission. We do have a legal quorum to be able to proceed, so this time let me cover a couple of items. If you have an application that is going to be heard before the Planning Commission today, if there's an application, it must have a representative from that application be present for it to be considered. Fifteen minutes are allotted to anyone who has an application to speak on its behalf. That fifteen minutes also pertains to anyone that wishes to speak on behalf of it and may not be the applicant. Fifteen minutes is also allotted for anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application. I will call them each category separately from the other, and that is fifteen minutes total time. So if you end up at the lectern and you have a line behind you, please be considerate of the people behind you and mind your time, giving them an opportunity to have a say. This is a recommending body, so the applications heard before it will be forwarded to the legal government body that will hear it for its final dispensation. In most instances, it will be to the Paulding County Board of Commissioners. They are present on your left side of the room today. Or the City of Hiram City Council will be forwarded and it will be heard at a date after it meets the legal requirements for advertising. Anybody being heard before the Board of Commissioners, their next meeting for consideration would be Wednesday? Or no?
July 11.
July 11. See, you've got to throw something out, Timmy. So July 11 at six?
2:00 P.M.
2:00 P.M., sorry. Oh, yeah, that's the early month. So July 11 at 2:00 P.M., and the applicant must be present for it to be considered there as well. Before we begin, I'm going to ask Director Littman if you have any announcements?
We do not.
Which I know we didn't after the conversation, but I still wanted to throw that to you.
We do not.
All right. So at this time, we will ask for the first application.
Okay, thank you. Our first application today is case 2023-13-C. This is in the City of Hiram. Application by Deena Patel requesting to rezone 2.66 acres from B2 Highway Business District to I-1 Light Industrial District for the development of a two-story self-storage facility accompanied by RV boat parking. Property is located in Land Lot 544, District 2, Section 3, along the northwest intersection of Pace Court and Pace Road within the city limits of Hiram, and it is located in Commission Post 3. We did not receive any calls with questions or comments. At this time, staff is recommending denial of this. However, if there is a desire by the City of Hiram to approve this zoning, staff recommends two stipulations.
Is the applicant present? If you please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Also, one bit of business, if any of the Planning Commission do wish to speak during this process, please make sure your microphone is on. Board of Commissioners, same as also.
Chairman and members of the board, my name is David White. I'm with Civil Logistics. Our address is 500 Sun Valley Drive, Suite H3, Roswell, Georgia. Here in regards to the self-storage application to rezone from B2 to I-1 Light Industrial. Appreciate you taking the time to hear our case before it goes to City of Hiram. Just a few quick things I wanted to point out about this project. It's a two-story storage facility from the east side or the right side of the plan. It accesses the upper story, and then from the west side, it accesses the lower story. So basically, you know, from one half of the building, part of it's going to be a basement, and then from the other side, it's going to be two-story. It's a light use, typically uses about 25 gallons per day of sewage. There's typically one employee in there. Light traffic, the ITE trip generation projects 36 total cars on average per day with a peak of five per hour at the peak time during the week. So very extremely light traffic and light usage. We did meet with the neighbors proactively behind there. After the first meeting, the first two that we met with were in favor and liked the development. They set up another meeting to meet with another neighbor that was out of state, and so we went back and had a second meeting with the neighbors and addressed their concerns. They were happy with the development. They informed us that they were, this sounds a little weird, but they were hoping for the property to be developed because when the hotel was originally developed, they cleared both lots, the hotel that's just to the east and this lot. And so there's no buffer there currently, and so everything was, you know, all the trees were cleared out, and so the noise from the main road and these other businesses go straight back to their house now. And so they really like the idea of this storage coming in because it's a low-intensity use. The building blocks a little bit of the noise, and then this 50-foot buffer would be planted that would help mitigate and shield their neighborhood from the uses. Another thing that I wanted to point out, we looked at the other storage facilities in the City of Hiram, and we found six storage facilities. Three of those storage facilities are located in the I-1 zoning district, which is what we're requesting. That is the only district that currently allows self-storage, whether it's mini warehouses or climate-controlled. And those were spot zonings. I know spot zonings typically are not desired in most cities, but when you look at the L1 or the I-1 zonings around Hiram, there's nine locations that I could find where the I-1 zoning exists. Eight of those are spot zonings, and then there's one location where there's a group of multiple facilities in that I-1 zoning district. So most of these are spot zonings. So three of these storage facilities in Hiram are in I-1. The other three are in B2, which is our current zoning. And so I don't know the exact reason for this. I'm assuming that maybe in the past, storage was allowed in B2, and maybe it was changed and no longer is allowed, but we are currently zoned the same zoning that half of the other storage facilities are currently in and, you know, are allowed to be there with. It's not that we want to do an industrial use, it's just that our client, who's owned this property for a while, wants to do this low-intensity use, which is really more of a retail use, but we understand that it falls under I-1. So just wanted to point out those few things. The neighbors, all were very positive about our case, and, you know, happy to answer any questions that you have about it.
Are you familiar with the two recommended stipulations if it were to receive a positive vote from the City Council of Hiram?
Yes, sir.
And you're agreeable to those?
We are agreeable to those. If I could make another quick statement, typically, I think it's the GDOT requirements. They recommend traffic impact studies for more than 100 vehicles per day typically, and this, the ITE, which is what GDOT uses for trip generation studies, projects 36 cars per day. So it's almost a third of what the threshold is for requiring a traffic impact analysis. They're also very expensive right now, so we request that we don't have to do the traffic impact analysis, but if the board feels that that is appropriate, then the client would be happy to do that.
Well, I can tell you that I travel that area quite a bit, and there's a lot more than 36 cars per hour. Must list 36 per day on Pace Road, so.
Sir.
And that red light, there is a good amount of accidents in that intersection also.
Yeah, the ITE trip generation is not a projection of what's on the road. I want to be clear, there's been no study of cars currently on that road. The ITE trip generation just predicts how much business, how much traffic a business will add or use going to there. So whatever there's already there would still go there, and this would be 36 cars additional to this one property. So it's nothing having to do with the existing.
Is there any kind of flammable stored on the site?
Typically, no. That could be a condition, but I think, my understanding is that most of these storage providers do not allow that in the facility.
What's the amount, the maximum amount? How do you store? Do you do it in containers, on racks? What's the manner of storage that you use?
The facilities are typically concrete floors, and then they'll have metal partitions and metal roll-up doors. So each customer would rent one particular unit, and then they would use a roll-up door to access and put things in their unit. And so it's within the confines of the building. It's a climate-controlled facility, and they would just carry their boxes in or wheel their boxes into their particular unit, just kind of like a garage almost with a roll-up door. But it's all interior.
So there's not multiple stories per floor? It's just both floors, you have two floors, or do you have three floors with a basement?
Just two floors. It's kind of situated like this. So the east side, you could get in from, you know, you drive in and you're at grade on the east, and then the west side is at grade on the lower floor. So it's just two floors total.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
Sir, what about your outside storage? What else is that? What else would you be storing outside?
No materials. There are a few parking spaces for either boat or RV, which would be fenced and behind gate. You know, that is an extremely small portion of the business. If that, however, in any way affects, you know, the decision that, I'm sure, you know, they could get rid of the outdoor parking spaces, I think it's 10, I think. You know, if that's a hang-up, be happy to get rid of those spaces and just have the building. It's all interior.
Did you say if it was climate-controlled or is it non-climate-controlled?
Climate-controlled.
You mentioned that the previous intended developer for the hotel had clear-cut the property or had cleared up to the boundaries of the other property owners. That would be the hotel and...
That's what the neighbors told us, that when the hotel was developed, both properties were cleared. I don't know that personally, but the neighbors told us that, and so they desired to have the buffer planted.
Would it be the intent, then, of the owners to reestablish a buffer, a screened buffer between particularly the I-1 property that you're proposing and the residential area of the neighborhood behind it?
Yes. In fact, as part of the requirements of I-1, it requires a 50-foot buffer.
Thank you.
So if it was B2, I don't think it does. Do you know for sure? Does not, B2 does not require the buffer, but the I-1 does, so this would put in the buffer that may otherwise not be required.
So how many of the spaces are needed?
There hasn't been a floor plan created yet. Typically, it's about 25% of the space is used for corridors and stairwells and things like that, which would bring us down to roughly 35,000 total. And then it's typically about 100 square feet per unit, so that would be 350 divided by two, so maybe about 170 per floor roughly.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Board of Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question to staff.
Please.
Ms. Littman. So he had mentioned that other zonings, B2, but that was probably older zonings in our older regulations, correct, that would allow them?
This is in the City of Hiram, and this is one area where City of Hiram ordinance difference, differs from Paulding County's.
Where I was leading with that was reading the analysis, the proposed development would not be in compliance with our 2022 comprehensive plan. So we had that identified as commercial, B2.
So high-intensity crossroad area that does not include industrial uses.
Which is why that comment was written.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And just to answer from part of the city, that was changed some time ago, a few years ago, to switch the, any type of storage, be it boat, RV, tractor-trailer, truck and trailer, car and trailer, whatever, as well as mini warehouse storage or storage generally to go to I-1, because in the B2, it required an SUP as well. So just to clean that up, it was decided just needed to be an I-1.
So any other questions?
My point, where I was going, was the comprehensive plan, that our comprehensive plan we did showed it not to be an I-1 area.
I understand. So if there are no more questions for the applicant, you can take your seat.
Thank you all for your time.
Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on behalf of this application? Seeing none, is there anyone here that wishes to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, at this time, we'll entertain a motion from Planning Commission with regard to this application, and recall that there are two listed stipulations recommended by staff. One has been politely objected to by the applicant. That would be number two.
If this is accepted and passed, I would like a number three of no flammable liquids allowed on the property.
Liquids or just material period?
Material period, especially on the outside, but no flammable allowed on the property.
So is that a motion to approve or a motion to deny but adding a third stipulation?
That's a motion to deny, but adding the third stipulation in case it does not pass.
So we have a motion to deny adding the third stipulation of no flammable materials? Yeah.
If there is a denial, there won't be stipulations. If, however, as Mr. Leggett said, should there be a motion to approve, it is his desire that a third stipulation be added regarding flammable materials.
Thank you. So we'll take it on face value of the denial has been made or a motion to deny. Is there anyone who needs a second?
I'll second the denial.
All in favor?
Our next case today is case 2023-17-C. Application by SW South Powder Springs LLC requesting to rezone 4.598 acres from R2 Suburban Residential District and B1 General Business to B1 General Business District to develop a 10,640 square foot commercial retail building. Property is located in Land Lots 3 and 4, District 18, Section 2, on the north side of Brownsville Road, and it is located in Commission Post Number 3. And on this case, we've also received no calls for questions or in opposition or support.
Is the applicant present? If you please come forward, sign in, state your name, address your comments to the Chair.
And I have a couple of things to pass out, if that's all right?
Sure. Go ahead and state.
My name is Charlie Stewart, and this is Jason Fritz. We're with Sullivan Wickley Development. Our address is 4151 Ashford-Dominy Road in Atlanta. We're a retail developer.
All right. And your partner's name was Jason Fritz? Thank you.
Yes, mine is Jason Fritz.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I hope you all are doing well today. We are here to respectfully request approval to rezone approximately 4.59 acres of land from R2 and B1 to entirely B1 of the subject property. The property is currently split-zoned with, so we are therefore asking to rezone 3.95 acres to be zone to B1 to match the front 0.65 acres. The proposed project is a 10,640 square foot Dollar General. This proposed store would be their new concept, which sells fresh produce along with their grocery and non-grocery items, allowing customers in this area for new convenient option to fresh food and grocery. I've included a picture of the new produce section at the new rolled-out Dollar General concept. There are existing buildings on the front 0.65 acres that were previously used for retail sales. Currently, the 3.95 in the rear is overgrown and sits vacant. The adjoining property to the east is currently zoned B1. And the front acreage exists in commercial. We think the best use of this land would be rezoning to B1 for the surrounding community. In order to improve current access, we plan to add a left-hand turn and a deceleration lane, both to Paulding County DOT specifications. We also intend to enhance the buffer with the property to the west with planting to minimize impacts on the adjacent residential neighborhood. The proposed Dollar General building will be constructed of brick with varying architectural accents above and beyond the county's architectural requirements. I've included some elevations of the building in that handout as well. All building lights will be full cutoffs, shielded to direct light downward, and the two or three parking lot lights will be shoebox-style, directing light down and not out into the Site will be designed in accordance to Paulding County and will include upgraded landscaping, and the store will operate from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The gain to the public includes tax revenue for the county plus 10 jobs for citizens of the surrounding area, and not to mention the previously mentioned access to fresh food and groceries for the community. Sales tax revenue to Paulding County will come from not only Paulding County shoppers, but will also pull from Cobb County, as the property is near the Cobb and Paulding border. We've received the comments from the planning staff expressing their support of the project if certain conditions are met, and we've reviewed these conditions and are happy to comply with them. We appreciate it, and we'll accept any questions at this time.
Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
You guys have read all the stipulations.
Yes.
You also see that you're being asked to comply with the corridor overlay district requirements?
Yes.
And the neighborhood business requirements?
Yes, the neighborhood business requirements for the permitted uses, as long as it allows us to build a 10,640 square foot building, and we are willing to comply with all the corridor overlay requirements.
And that small site with B1 on your parcel, Roger May can help me, is that the old, that's the old gas station?
That's the old gas station. They later turned it into like a mini flea market.
Okay.
But if you remember, back before the Brownsville extension was created to do a 90-degree, the road actually went into a 45-degree basically in front of this store, and we had a very bad traffic problem there. A lot of accidents in that curve, and they still have accidents with the road coming into a 90-degree. For some reason, people have a hard time driving 45 down through there, and that's one of the problems I see with it because of the traffic and the lay of the road and the site distance is going to be pretty hard for a high-traffic area like a Dollar General to usually bring us.
And you guys have, part of this parcel is the B1, the 0.64 acres, but the B1 to the east of it is not part of your property, correct?
No.
Okay. Do we have an existing use on that B1 piece?
I don't know.
There's a "help" sign.
Yeah, currently sits residential.
Yeah, because that would have been done early 90s, late 80s?
Maybe.
Yeah, so it says the adjacent property is single-family residential, but it does show it's on B1.
Probably just rezone in anticipation of it becoming a commercial town.
Yeah, we'd be proposing the left-turn lane, probably about $180,000 to put one in, and the DSO lane is probably about another $80,000 prevent. We'd be improving that area quite a bit in terms of widening that road and, you know, hopefully making it safer. We'd also be getting a clearing agreement from the neighbor of the property you just mentioned to improve visibility as you come from the east to the west into the site. So, you know, it's about the max, maximum type of improvements you can do, left-turn lane and a DSO lane to the intersection. I did hear a rumor that there was a proposed roundabout going in near this intersection.
It needs one by them.
Yeah, so that would also kind of help slow traffic through that area. Obviously, we can't control the speed that people drive, but, you know, we're trying to put up as much as we can in terms of safety improvements to make that access, you know, for the Dollar General.
Let me just defer quickly to our DOT Director, George Jones. There is not a roundabout going in, is that what I'm seeing?
There's not, right at this, on Brownsville Road. There's one at the intersection of Mark Hickory Stow and Brownsville Extension that's planned that should go to construction later this year.
Roundabouts become rumor, kind of like the Krispy Kreme that came into Hiram.
You guys develop, you have other stores? This is your first one?
Yes, we do about 15 to 20 stores a year.
Okay.
All across Georgia. This, yeah, this would be their new prototype store. We're doing them all over right now. They have, you know, fresh foods and stuff like that, fresh produce, so they feel there's a need for the area.
It's more their market concept, I've seen.
So what is your plan to keep it maintained outside?
To keep, I'm sorry.
To keep the building maintained outside?
You know, that would be something that is, you're talking about like the stuff that they put outside, the goods that they sell and stuff. Yeah, you know, we can't control that. Commissioners tend by putting, you know, like things in place where you can't have outside storage, those kinds of things, you know, in place, those kinds of conditions. But, you know, they do sell goods, they sell their, you know, lawn chairs and stuff like that outside, and, you know, put pallets of water out there and, you know, and sell that. But, you know, if it's allowed by the code and the rules, you know, then they'll probably do it, but if it's not allowed, then they, you know, they won't, they can't do it, so.
Is this typical Dollar General lease, leasing from you guys?
Yeah, it's a 15-year lease, yep, with, I think, three, five-year options. So they'll be there for, you know, a good while.
So Dollar General will be responsible for keeping the area clean?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Their store manager will be responsible for that, you know, and if they don't, you know, and you have to find them for some reason, then they'll get fixing it up pretty quick. But this would be, you know, we would also put in a brick dumpster enclosure, you know, kind of keep that nice and neat for them, so that wouldn't be a problem. Certain things, you know, if there's certain things that you'd like to see added to it, we'd be happy to do that.
I have a question for staff with the water and sewer. Since this is going to be one of the main trunk lines coming up, Brownsville going toward Since this is gonna be one of the main trunk lines coming up, Brownsville going toward ninety-two, is there enough access left here to run that line when the time comes? Have you seen this plan yet?
We've seen this.
Yes.
Yeah, your.
Okay, as far as this plan is concerned and the location of the sewer coming down Time Valley, we currently don't have plans to bring sewer down to this area. The question is, at the time they do.
Yes, that's one of my lines. Is, is this site plan, we know eventually it'll be run down Brownsville to the south side of the county and up Baker's Bridge toward Ridge Road. So that'll be the access for that route, I'm sure. And I'm just wondering if there's enough setback on this to allow that in the future.
Do you mean treatment capacity?
No, I mean for the actual line.
He's talking about the sewer line and having
Yeah.
dedicated sewer line easement area. We'd be happy to put that in there, you know, along the front edge to, to dedicate at no cost to the county for sewer line, if that's something you all like to see.
Because eventually, it's gonna be run, you know, to the southern end of the county, and that's the best way to run it. It's down Brownsville all the way.
Yeah, we'd be happy to make that a condition.
To Baker's Ridge Road.
Yeah.
Basically, it's straight shot.
Piggyback on Mr. Leggins' comment for Ray. We're gonna, this is gonna be built on septic in a sewer-required basin area? Is that correct?
This is part of the Sweetwater Basin.
Correct.
So they call it under the Sweetwater Basin. It's just that there's no current plans right now. These are long-term plans, but it is part of the Sweetwater Basin.
But they're asking for a rezoning. Are we gonna allow them to build it on the septic system?
Based on the time, they would still be required to pay the Sweetwater fees.
Okay.
But based on the timing, it's not gonna be anytime soon. So they would have to, you know, septic until second time.
Okay. Y'all understand that?
Yeah.
Okay.
They have no problem. We're, we're fine with sewer or septic. It's two bathrooms and a mop sink, so it's not much use at all.
Any other questions from the planning commission to the applicant? Board commissioners, any questions to the applicant? Ms. Calloway?
Is there a stipulation that whenever sewer comes down that road that they will have to tie on? Or is that just understood? How, how does that work?
If they're paying the fees for Sweetwater, Ray, you might want to address that.
Yeah, they, as long as the septic system is functional, there is no deadline on when they need to tie on. They pay the fees because it's in the basin and sometime down in the future when something is built, is available for them to tie on. So if you do not have the requirement before, we have to tie them thirty-six minutes.
In the past, when we, when we have approved other things, I think I remember that being a stipulation, am I wrong? That there have been stipulations that they did have to tie on when it became available?
I believe it has in certain cases.
We have, we have on a couple of instances made it where if we're doing it this way, that we add a stipulation they tie on. Well, the timing of tying on to that sewer is still always gonna be with your water and sewer department and the, and the customer.
Yeah, we'd be fine with that stipulation. That's no problem. We actually prefer sewer if available.
Any other questions from the board of commissioners? At this time, you can take your seat. We'll proceed on. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak on behalf of this application? On behalf, come around, sign in. Okay. Anyone wishing to speak on behalf? Seeing none, if there's anyone wishing to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns, come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, address your comments to the chair, which would be me. And you do have a couple of others that may wish to speak, so please be mindful of your time.
I've never done this before.
It's okay.
But my name is Elaine Tidwell Williams, and I'm the landowner to the east that has the thirty-eight acres. Okay? And so my point really isn't so much in opposition. I kind of, Ms. Fitzgerald, I kind of had concerns that she raised at mine borders on that. The lender says they're gonna use plants to surround, you know, just plants. So, like I said, I've got a long property line, and I prefer that they build an eight-foot retaining wall between my property and where they build the Dollar General.
Can I stop you there? You say a retaining wall. Do you mean a fence or do you mean a retaining wall?
Well, I prefer an eight-foot retaining wall. I was on the Dallas Connector yesterday, and I saw like a seven-eleven, and they had a chain-linked fence. And I just saw candy wrappers all stuck in it, you know. So, I mean, I prefer an eight-foot retaining wall, but if you can't do that, I could see a chain-linked fence with grass, pine straw, and cedar trees. Now, you say, well, why is this lady up here talking like this? I've gone down this path before in Douglas County. And there was, there's a very famous, everybody shopped there, grocery store, chain grocery store. Very famous, everybody's been there. And my family's property was right beside it. So our property became a dump for everybody's candy wrappers and papers and whatever. And I, we spent thirty thousand dollars last year cleaning up the mess of everybody dumping their garbage on my property. So if they're just gonna plant a few trees, that's not gonna help me. And safety concerns too. This is thirty-eight acres of dense forest. So, I mean, if kids are in the car waiting for their parents to shop, they've had hunters out there, not to mention wild dogs and everything else, it's really a safety concern too, almost for the customers. So, and I have the bill for the thirty thousand I paid last year to have it cleaned up for everybody else to enjoy the business next door. You know, Douglas County wanted us to pay for the cleanup even though we didn't make the mess.
You're talking about bill from the, the incident you endured in Douglas County?
Yes, yes, and I paid it, we paid it last year. So this is all nice, and from what I've seen about the plan, this store is about thirty percent larger than their normal store. So you're gonna have a lot of people there. A lot of people means more trash. So I just want like some way for them not to get on my property and trash it up so I don't have to pay another thirty thousand dollar bill.
Okay.
That's my reason I'm here.
I understand.
Okay. So I would like not to have just a few trees. I'd like a chain-linked fence or retaining wall or something.
Basically, an opaque fence, something you can't see through, something that blocks?
Yes, I prefer that, something that, that won't trash my property.
Generally, a retaining wall is holding earth back. It's to make walls of earth. So I didn't know if that's what you meant or if you're just wanting a blockade.
Well, you see, I guess I'm not an architect, but you see these retain, these eight-foot walls, blocks all over the county, everywhere. Everybody has them in their yard, you know. Actually, I have one in my yard. But eight feet or chain-linked fence or, you know, something.
Well, thank you very much. Is there anything else?
No, sir, that's all.
Alright. If there's anyone else that would wish to speak, please come forward, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
I'm gonna apologize first. I'm deaf. I have no idea. I can read, but I can't, I don't know. I'm just gonna tell you right now that I object, not because of somebody.
What's your name?
Virginia Carr, K-A-R-R. I live right across the street from where Larry had that old antique store. And it was really more of a hobby store. They mostly just opened on Saturdays, and there wasn't that much traffic. But I live in that little white brick house, which would be, I'm not sure exactly where. But I don't understand why a Dollar General would want to build there. There's a family Dollar right up the street. And then you go where they built all those new apartments in the Kroger area. There's a Dollar General there. Now, why would all those people come down here to our area when they can shop right next door at a Dollar General? I'm not really against anybody trying to invest in, but I just think it's a neighborhood. We all keep our yards clean. We all work real hard. And I'm eighty-four. I'm probably gonna be there that much longer. But I've worked hard. My little house is paid for. And I've done a lot of remodeling with it, extra driveways, deck fenced in yard for the dog. So I just want to say that I vote no. And I apologize that I can't carry on a real conversation. Nothing against Dollar General, but I'm taking for myself. Plus with the traffic, I have a little bit of asthma, the gas. I don't know how close it'll be to my front yard. I don't wanna be sitting on the front porch, I'm sure. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to say?
I'd say build somewhere else, because I live with her. And it's gonna cause trash, rats, and stuff like that.
Would you please state your name, sir?
Michael Callen, I'm sorry.
That's alright.
So that's another place to build on ninety-two. There's one on ninety-two, on Brownsville Road, up there at High Lythian. We already got two there already. This is gonna cause, you know, crime probably there, trash, rats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns about this application? I will go back to the applicant. There is some time remaining. If you would like to address any of the concerns that you've just heard, obviously, there's opinion involved with whether or not this is a good place from the applicant's perspective to build versus the residents who are there. I don't know that we can adjudicate that, but part of the question is related to cleanliness of the area, changing of the character of the neighborhood from being a neighborhood to having something commercial set inside it. Asking about, the word used was retaining wall or a privacy fence that would obstruct any kind of garbage from the site coming over or encroaching on the neighbor's property. It seems that these people take a great deal of pride in their area, wanting to make sure that it stays clean and nice for everybody who lives there. So if you would like to address any of that?
Sure. I'll address Ms. Williams first. Landscaping, we would maybe find putting in an eight-foot tall wooden fence. You know, picket stout, not picket, a solid wooden fence to prevent, versus a chain-linked fence, that would be better for having, you know, candy wrappers, that stuff flying through there. And then we'd also offer to put up a double row of Leland cypress as well. And that way, she would be looking at the row of Leland cypress inside the fence line. I would suggest we only do it on the area that we disturb for the Dollar General. Because if you look at the site plan, that rear portion is heavily wooded. It's a hill, probably about ten or fifteen feet high. That's gonna be her best screen possible, is to have that left undisturbed, the rear portion. But any of the disturbed areas, we'd be fine putting up a fence with a double row of Leland cypress. And then the planning, or the, the arborist for the county will tell us which trees we can and can't take out eventually. But we won't take out any specimen trees, you know, along that buffer line, so. I'd also put up there, we've done this before, in terms of the trash, putting in a roll tainer area. If you've never seen them, they have those, when they condense their boxes, they'll store them outside. And those don't go into the dumpster area. They go, they kind of sit outside. And sometimes pieces of boxes get loose from that. I would say we could put in a, condition us to put a brick roll tainer area in so that when they store those roll tainers, it's an enclosed area. And it keeps everything, as well as the, it'd be a separate dumpster and then a roll tainer area fills up those roll tainers. If that's something that would help, you know, alleviate the concerns.
You're saying roll?
Roll tainer. Yeah, it's like a U-shaped metal cart that they, they'll stack their boxes on that they, when they empty out their, their supplies or their stuff. And then they'll compact it in the compactor, and then they store them on that, and then the truck comes and picks them up. So oftentimes, that's a lot of the loose kind of litter that'll get loose from that is from those, those roll tainers. So we would put those in a separate brick enclosed area, just like the dumpster. So. The reason, Ms. Carr, I'll, I'll, I'll try to address Ms. Carr's, you know, I'll try to look at you so you can read my lip. The DG wants to go there because they serve the neighborhoods, and they feel that they know their sales and where their customers come from. And, and, sorry.
It's okay.
Yeah. They feel, they know where the cus, they, they serve neighborhoods, is what they do. They, they know where their customers come from, and they feel that there's a, a need for a store here. So other than that, you know, they feel that they, they're willing to invest in this area. So, you know, that's, that's when we come in and we find the property and, and develop it. The traffic, like she said, there's Dollar Generals sporadically throughout the county. The Dollar General doesn't pull in traffic from I twenty. You know, it pulls in the people that already live in this neighborhood. So they're typically pulling in people that already live here. So it's not necessarily new traffic. There'll be new turning movements into this property, but it's not necessarily pulling in, you know, people from outside of this area to come shop here, so. And we've tried to put in the left turn lane, the D cell lane, as many traffic improvements as we can to address that. There's only so much we can do. But this should, we, we have site visibility. This meets DOT requirements, what we're proposing. So it would be, it's, it's only gonna help, you know, that, that in terms of getting the access, so.
Well, depending on what the result is from the planning commission, I cannot prejudice their decision by saying that it's going to be one or the other, approval or denial or whatever.
Sure.
But you might take the opportunity after the meeting is adjourned to meet the Carrs and Ms. Williams.
Sure.
And just talk about those concerns. I think it potentially go a long way, depending on what the result is here.
Hundred percent.
I always advocate that, so.
Yeah.
Is there any questions for the applicant at this point, for the planning commission? Board of commissioners, any questions?
To ask, what are the hours of the store generally?
Eight AM to ten PM.
Any other questions from the board of commissioners? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, I will entertain a motion with regard to application twenty twenty-three.
I would just, the other thing I was thinking is you're gonna build such a giant store, that means you need to make a profit. And in a year, it's still like a building, and hopefully, I still be there. I just worry that, I just can't believe a Dollar Store would be wanting to be so close to another Dollar Store. Damn it all. I just don't see these names without the work you got to do. That's a ten thousand foot square building. That's a big deal. I mean, like I said, I have nothing personal against, but hell, I just don't mind for my leisure.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
It's all right. That's okay.
Before you call for the vote, can I just share something from the overlay district? Brownsville Road is not in the overlay district, but that is one of the recommended stipulations, that it be, this property be subject to the corridor overlay. So, that would require some enhanced landscaping, and it does prohibit outdoor storage. I just wanted to share that that's already addressed in the corridor overlay, that there would be no outdoor storage of the items sold.
Is that outdoor storage during business hours or at any time?
Outdoor storage prohibited. No outside unenclosed storage or refuse, whether or not in containers, or display of merchandise shall be permitted on any lot.
Because we see it every Dollar General, swimming pools, swim noodles, everything you can need during the day, but it's usually put up at night.
Well, we'll, we'll have a special code enforcement check of some of our local Dollar Generals, thanks to you, Mr. Steele.
Well, at this time, then, I will consider a motion regarding application 2023-17-Z. If you choose to make a motion to approve, there are six listed stipulations. There has been a suggested seventh and eighth, by my count, by the applicant in order to address concerns from the neighborhood. One, to add an eight-foot tall solid wood fence with Leland Cypress plantings along the boundary associated with Ms. Williams' property. And then a addition of a brick rollator, roll-tainer, sorry, for the outside holding of boxes associated with store supplies.
I'll make a motion to approve with that fence being an eight-foot chain-linked fence because nobody maintains after those wooden fences are put in. Nobody maintains them. They fall down. Dollar General won't maintain them, and it's not fair for the adjoining property on them. So, I'll make a motion for an eight-foot chain-linked fence with the roll-tainer and the six stipulations.
What about privacy standards?
I might make a point.
What about?
Can we add a screen to that, a nontranspirant screen to that fence?
With a screen?
You want to add to it with a spring to it? Okay, I'll make that, would that be the ninth? Or do you want to make it part of the seventh?
So.
Chain-linked fence with screen, yes. And, and two rows of Leland Cypress.
You also had a comment from one of the Commissioners about tying the sewer when available. That's a possible step if you're adding stipulations.
Make that the ninth, and tying to sewer, to sewer when it becomes possible because Brownsville Road's going to be a main sewer trunk line eventually down to Sweetwater Church and to Baker Street.
If you're going to say that, do you want to say when available by DPS standards, which is 200 feet?
Yes.
I mean, because available leaves quite a bit open for definition.
Right.
Here's a motion.
That is the motion.
And then there was the question or the matter of the brick roll-tainer for the boxes, which sounds like it would have to be required anyway due to the corridor overlay standards being in place.
Yes, fine.
So, that's a. So, there are now nine stipulations. There are six original and three additional. I think I've recorded it correctly. Do we, and that was, motion was bade by Mr. Leggett. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Aston. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes three, one, and one. And again, I would just recommend conversation amongst neighbors. Ready?
Okay. Our next case today is case number 2023-18-Z. Application by Seth and Kelsey Alexander requesting to rezone .875 acres from R2 Suburban Residential to B1 General Business to allow for the expansion of the existing animal hospital.
Hold on just a moment.
Good.
Please continue.
Property is located in Land Lot 1159, District 2, Section 3, on the east side of Villarica Highway, south of McGuire Road. Proposed site address is 6101 Villarica Highway, and it is located in Post 2. We did not receive any calls on this one, and staff recommends approval with one stipulation.
Is the applicant present? Please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair.
Good afternoon. My name is Seth Alexander. My wife, Kelsey Alexander, here. We own New Georgia Animal Hospital. The business's been there since 1997, and we're trying to keep up with the county. And we had submitted some building permit plans, and they wanted us just to increase the buffer. My wife and I also own the land that wraps around this property as well. We just needed to scoot back a little bit of lines to meet the buffer. So, therefore doing that, we needed to change it to the appropriate zoning. I've went to every single adjoining neighbor and had them sign that they approve. We sat down with them with the whole plan, showed them everything. They're really happy. I talked to Josh Montefusco from Georgia Department of Transportation. I believe that was the one stipulation. He reviewed. He said it would take him a few days to get something in writing, but our entrance is so large, and the way that it's going to grow, we're going to have a few spots. But we're already a four-doctor practice. We're not going to get any larger than that. That is where we're stopping. So, as far as appointments per day and things like that, it's going to be at that standstill, so. Any questions in particular that I could answer for y'all?
We will get right to it. I will say this, and I'll take an opportunity to do something I haven't done before, but to commend you for reaching out to your neighbors prior to a zoning meeting. That is actually a very refreshing thing to have happen, so thank you.
Thank you.
You already addressed the stipulation, and I see we might have a question?
You, you be me. I was going to say the same thing, but getting with the neighbors is always good.
Exactly, exactly. Are there any questions to the applicant from the Planning Commission?
Seth, my mic's on. I will go ahead and kind of recap it. So, you're only doing it because you started your building, and you needed additional setbacks. So, it's not, your, your addition has already started, or you started that permit process?
No. So, so we haven't started the addition yet. I've done everything, architectural work, everything.
Okay.
The only issue was when, when we started to, we were going to be approved up until we needed to move just a few feet back on the additional septic lines. So, at that point, they said, hey, we're going to, to meet these requirements, you need to add so many feet of buffers. And that was the civil engineer telling me yes or no.
But your building itself does not come into this new zoning addition.
Correct. Yeah, as you can see right there. So, that, that gray area, I think is the new addition. It doesn't even touch, touch the new zoned area. I just wanted to square off the property since we're already going to have to push things back to make that setback, to square off the property, make it look nice, and have it.
So, you were considerate of your neighbors, and you did your homework before coming here.
So.
Now, you, you.
Man, y'all going to make my ego big.
Trying to figure out what this world's come to.
But you own all the way around it. When I looked earlier, you and your wife owned the property for the practice, but you also owned the U-shaped seven acres.
Correct, correct, yes, sir.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission or comments like mine? Any questions from the Board of Commissioners? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all.
Same back. Anybody else wish to speak on behalf of this application? Anyone wish to speak in opposition to this application or may have questions, comments, or concerns? At this time, then, I will ask for a motion with regard to application 2023-18-Z.
I make the motion to approve with the one listed stipulation.
Motion to approve by Mr. Steele with the one listed stipulation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one. And if I were needed, I would have voted for it. I'll go ahead and let you know. Thank you very much for your time. Of course, this will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for consideration at their next meeting, which will be again in June.
July 11.
July 11.
2pm.
I keep wanting to put it sooner. And you can do your production.
All right, our last case today is a zoning ordinance text amendment. This is a public hearing to be held by the Paulding County Planning Commission to consider zoning text amendments to Title I Administration, Title II Zoning, and the appendix of the Unified Development Ordinance for the City of Hiram, Georgia.
And I will be happy to speak on this to begin with. I will listen to the Planning Commission's attorney if I need to be corrected, or Director Lippman for that matter. This is a similar action taken by Paulding County for their own UDO in previous month. It addresses the same situation of needing to make sure that the changes in state law are reflected in the Uniform Development Ordinance for the City of Hiram to be compliant with state law. It also addresses probably numerous grammatical errors and conflicting statements that were found in the original drafting of the document. So, it basically straightens out a few things, and is probably one of the first of a successive number of amendments that will be forthcoming for the City of Hiram. So, at this moment, if there's any questions, I'll take those, or I will open the floor to public comment. So, I will now open the floor to public comment. I will now close the floor to public comment. And I guess we need to make a motion for a recommendation to the Hiram City Council, so if somebody would be so kind.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Mr. Aston. Second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Motion passes four, zero, and one. And that brings us to the conclusion of today's meeting. I want to thank everybody for your participation and for your patience. Is there any further announcements we need to make going forward? Okay, thank you. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
So moved by Mr. Steele. Second from Ms. Fitzgerald. All in favor? Motion passes, and we are adjourned.